Okay, Monticello School Board Meeting for March 21st. It will be called to order. Please stand for Budget Leader.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, in the name of the Constitution and of our Constitution.
We have an approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Seconded.
Approved the agenda. Motion made by Melissa, seconded by Kathy. All those in favor, just say aye.
Aye.
Close and nay. Motion passes six zero. No citizen comments. We'll move on. Student representatives Emily and Natalie, good to see you again. Glad you're here.
Okay, hello again. I'm Emily, this is Natalie. Not too much to say today, so first I want to talk about how the end of quarter three is coming up in about two weeks now. And talking to Mr. Coell, he brought up the fact that there was a meeting with freshmen recently, sort of to kind of get them more aware as their first year of high school ends, just to make them realize, to get out of that bubble, not just focus on their grade, but their placement as like high schoolers as a whole, and kind of think more about their future going into these next three years. There was a change in the freshman schedule. So, I don't know if many of you know this, but freshmen follow a different schedule to the rest of high schoolers, where they do a pod schedule, you know, English, civics, and science is different from the rest of their classes. That was changed to allow them to follow kind of the bell schedule that the rest of us follow for the rest of the year, to see how they perform, if it's allowing them to be more organized and allowing them to manage their time better. And that'll just be for the rest of this year. It's not like a permanent change. There's going to be a meeting with seniors in these next coming weeks, sort of to reflect the end of quarter three and the beginning of quarter four. Talking to Mr. Coell, he told me that we've been going to school for 13 years in four quarters. That amounts to 52 quarters, and we are going to finish 51 out of 52 quarters. So we're going into quarter 52, which, um, that's kind of like, it's nervous. We're gonna talk about that. It's like, I'm nervous, I'm excited, I'm a little sad, you know, to leave these friends behind, like lovely Natalie and my wonderful teachers and my wonderful, you know, administration. But it's exciting to finally get into the real world. How do you feel about it?
I'm excited, but I'm definitely gonna miss a lot of the opportunities that we have here, because I think we have a lot of great teachers and a lot of great students who I know I probably won't see, but I'm excited for the opportunities that I have in the future.
Right, yeah. It's just a wonderful thing. Graduation details will be revealed, you know, in these next coming weeks, coming April and May, especially since it's all coming really fast. And speaking of which, I have my personal countdown. We have 47 school days left as seniors. So, it doesn't count weekends or days we have off, but it's like all school days and 47. Really nothing. To Natalie.
Um, so as a lot of you may know, winter sports just came to an end, and I'll let Mr. Revnik touch up on that, but just from a student perspective, I just wanted to share how exciting it's been the last couple of months cheering on our teams. We had great student turnout from girls' basketball to boys' hockey, and I think we brought a lot of energy, but also a lot of respect. Um, I saw students even after games picking up trash in the bleachers, and I think that just goes to say a lot about our students and our school district, and that's great to see. Um, our talent show will be April 14th. We had tryouts, I think, two weeks ago, and results came out last week. Um, I think a lot of students are really excited for that, because I don't think we've been able to have one for the past couple of years, just with COVID and everything going on. So that's something that I'm personally really looking forward to, and I think a lot of other students are also. Testing season has become upon us. Um, ACT, AP exams, and MCA tests are all along their way. Um, students are continuing to work hard to finish off the school year. Prom is April 30th. Um, I think the theme is a night on cloud nine, which is super exciting and interesting, um, to see what the prom committee is gonna come up with. Um, we're having two grand marches again, one at 3:00 PM and one at 4:30 PM. I think a lot of students are just super excited. We're starting to hear discussion among the school, and it's just super positive and everyone's really excited for that.
I'm pretty sure it's going to be at the bowling alley, too.
Yep. Um, last quick announcement is about Unified. I know I've talked about this a lot, but Unified is a group of kids with and without intellectual disabilities that come together to promote inclusion and kindness. Um, something that really big is happening in our, um, club. We are having a polar plunge come to our school, so it's gonna bring in a huge tank that's gonna be just a tub full of cold water, and we're gonna hopefully raise money for it. Um, we have about $2,600 of our $7,000 goal so far, and I think only about 18 are registered, which is super exciting, because we got a lot coming. Um, it's gonna be on April 7th during the last half the day, and I think just a lot of students are excited and we're hopeful that we can get a little bit of administration to jump, so be brave with us. Yep. If anyone has any questions.
Maybe Mr. Olson will want to do the plunge.
Well, I'm sure I will.
Uh, I think that's about everything we have for today, kind of wrapping up the end of the quarter. A lot of exciting stuff, especially for the freshmen getting into the new year and for us getting into the real world. So, thank you again for having us on. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you ladies very much. Okay, we'll move ahead to the consent agenda. Everybody sent, everybody was sent the consent agenda. Any questions? Discussion? You need a motion for that?
So moved. Second.
To approve consent agenda made by Melissa, seconded by Jennifer. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero. Uh, next, Mr. Revnik, about our winter and spring activities update.
All right. Good evening. Met with the girls today, and it was kind of funny, they came in my office. I said, "Let's just make sure we're on the same page tonight," and they just had their phones. I've got my notepad, I don't understand why they don't have notepads, but they, uh, they did a great job. Pretty impressive students, so. Uh, just wrapping up winter sports, um, we're gonna do a pep fest on Friday to celebrate all the success that we had this winter, and to recognize, um, our athletes that excelled and our state participants and our fine arts and in our high school sports. So, looking forward to that. That'll be at the end of the day on Friday. Uh, DECA, uh, we participated in the District Five competition this winter. We had 11 students advance to the state tournament. I think we had 25 students this winter in, in DECA. Our top finishers were Summer Langvash, she's a senior, and Jalen Dyer. Um, they went to state in integrated marketing, and Elena Brayton in retail merchandising. So those are our top three finishers at the state tournament for DECA. So they went down, spent the night in the cities, and competed with high schools from all around the state of Minnesota. Musical, we started it in the fall. COVID shut us down. Some of the students that started in our musical unfortunately weren't able to finish, because then they're in winter sports, but we were able to pull it off. Um, we did it the weekend before spring break, and we performed the high school musical. We did three evening shows, and the students were very happy that we still were able to pull something together, um, during, again, another challenging year when it came to the musical. One act, we performed Anonymous, and we couldn't perform at the Mississippi Eight Festival, because multiple students were out with COVID when that took place. But we did compete at sections, and we took fourth place in the section tournament. So they were able to compete one. Our math team, I think it was our highest finish ever in math team. Mr. Stoix, our advisor, he does an amazing job. Uh, we took first in our division, and then we took second in sections, and we missed winning and advancing to state as a team by one question. So, huge bummer that we missed by one question that came down to that. But we did have one individual who's a junior, his name's Thor Lemke. Thor Lemke is amazing. Uh, Mr. Stoix said he is probably the most advanced student he has ever had in math. And Thor went to state as an individual, and I can only remember in my 12 years of one other student doing that. I gave Mr. Stoix a hard time today, because, uh, Mr. Lemke works in the activities office, me in the off-season. So, I think I hired a pretty good kid. Uh, Knowledge Bowl, uh, with COVID, we've had some setbacks, obviously, at the high school, uh, but we, um, we managed to have a Knowledge Bowl season. They were only able to get to a couple meets, though. It's just hard on Saturdays with so many kids working nowadays, that they just couldn't find as many Saturdays as we wanted to send them to events. But they did compete twice, and we're already excited about recruiting more participants for next year. We had about a dozen students this year. First Robotics is in the same situation. Uh, didn't have it last year because of COVID. The year before, it was also shut down. And First Robotics, we currently are, uh, building our robot. We have nine students participating, and they're excited to compete with the robot this year. And, uh, Parker Duran, he's a custodian at the high school. He is our advisor. He's doing a great job. And, uh, the robot might make a, an appearance at the pep fest on Friday. So, hopefully they have it running, and, uh, it could show up, and maybe that'll drum up some excitement in First Robotics. And then, uh, moving on to activities real quick. Um, we only had one conference championship this winter. Boys' swimming and diving, uh, won the Mississippi Eight championship. They also advanced to true team-state, and we had 11 all-conference swimmers and divers. We had two all-state, um, participants. One was Dakota Parker, he's a senior. Dakota broke all-school records and pool records in diving. He's absolutely an amazing diver. He finished second in state, barely lost out on the state championship. And then Clay McGah in swimming. Clay, um, also all-state, and he broke a pool and school record in his event, so just an elite swimmer. So our swimming program continues, uh, to produce outstanding athletes. Uh, girls' hockey, um, we co-op with St. Michael, called the Riverhawks. We're in the late conference, so it's a tough conference to play in. We finished in fourth place, and we had three all-conference players. And Hallie Dahlhammer from Monticello High School was academic all-state, so huge accomplishment for Hallie. And a fun fact, highlighted the season, the coach said was beating Minnetoka, and Minnetoka lost in a close game in the state championship. So, we had a strong team, and it was fun watching them play this winter. Uh, wrestling, we finished in sixth place in the Mississippi Eight Conference. Um, some highlights, Nelson Anderson was all-conference, and Nelson, uh, he's a senior captain. He, uh, recorded his 100th win this season. Also Quinn McCullough, captain senior, recorded his 100th win as well. And Quinn was all-state academic. He's a 4.0 student at Monticello High School. And then Alex Fearing, he had 75 wins in his career. He advanced to the state tournament. He was our only state participant. And, um, something that we're very proud of, the highest GPA in our class in wrestling for a team was a 3.83. Monticello High School had a 3.81 team GPA in wrestling. That is unbelievable. About 30 guys on the wrestling team. Boys' basketball, we moved up in our conference standing this year. We finished in second place in the Mississippi Eight Conference. Carson Colas, Brady Thompson, and Wyatt Swatsky were all all-conference. And Carson was selected as conference MVP, and he finished his career as the fourth all-time leading scorer in Monticello basketball history. Um, outstanding basketball player that hopefully will be playing somewhere, uh, next season. Girls' basketball, we finished fourth in the conference, and we finished second in the section. We upset the two-seed Shisago Lakes in the playoffs. We had two players all-conference, Olivia Hansen and Samantha Voel. And unfortunately, the top-ranked team all-year, Becker, is in our conference. They're also in our section, and they beat us. And then Becker ended up finishing second on Saturday in the state tournament. Dance team, we moved up. We finished third in the conference, and we had a young team, only one senior on the team. 21 girls participated. We already have 28 signed up for our spring tryout, and, um, just the reports I got from the girls, it's just a fun, exciting season, and they're looking forward to next year. And it's, it's gonna be a strong, young team. We had four dancers make all-state, which is a huge accomplishment. And that's, uh, summer derby, Maya Ritter, Haley Kuhn, and Josie Johnson. Hopefully I'm getting all their names right. Johnson's a nice easy one. Gymnastics, um, our gymnastics team didn't finish where we wanted them to, but we were top 10 all-year. We finished third in the conference. We have a very good, um, conference in gymnastics, very strong. Uh, most of the schools are outstanding. But the gymnastics team, unfortunately, we had some injuries right at the end of the season before section play. But during the season, gymnastics broke a school record for the most points ever by the varsity and by the JV. So we just had an outstanding team ranked in the top 10 all-season, and, um, we were section favorites, but several of our gymnasts were hurt and weren't able to compete in sections. So, uh, next year, we're hoping that we're healthy and we can make a nice run. And then boys' hockey, uh, they finished third in the conference. They, but, uh, obviously, we had a great section run, section champions. Finished sixth at state, gone to state now four times in the last six years. Wilson Dahlheimer, uh, finished with 115 points in his career, just an outstanding career. His brother Troy is our all-time leading scorer at Monticello, uh, for our moose hockey program. And then individual awards, we have quite a few players that will be receiving awards, but they have not been notified yet, so, um, uh, just hold off on that, because they'll announce their names at the banquet. Some of them have some pretty nice recognition coming their way, so. That kind of wraps up winter, and then real quick for, um, spring. Janice has been so busy, she does an amazing job in our office, just registering everyone. There's just a buzz right now, and I think a lot has to do with the nicer weather and, and the spring. And, uh, kids are signing up. We've got huge participation numbers right now in, in all of our sports that have started. Today, um, both boys' and girls' golf started and baseball started. Uh, next week, Monday, tennis will start, and then lacrosse, boys and girls, the week after. Um, track and softball started last week, so it's been really busy. I went in the gym, and, and, uh, there's just kids everywhere, so it's a fun time at the high school, and they're already out running on the turf, they're running on the track. So there's just kids everywhere right now, so a lot going on. Any questions?
Good job. Busy this winter, huh?
Yeah, it was fun. It was fun, but, uh, I wish it would have been a little busier. I, I'd like, uh, more teams advancing to the state tournament, so we'll have to work on that in the coming years here. But it's always fun.
You represented us well.
Yeah, I did. Thank you.
The old-school yellow notepad works just as well as the phones, just so you know. Nice job.
I still use, yeah, my paper calendar. It's what I do, so, yeah. Thank you.
See, principal? They made me burn it a few years ago.
I won't. I think they order them just so I have them, you know, so I have to use them.
Did you, uh, have one more item?
I did. Um, I had one thing I wanted to just ask the board and, and just run it by you. A few years ago, I'm gonna guess it was four or five years ago, um, our community came to us and asked if we would add a club bowling team at River City Extreme, and the school board agreed to do that, no cost to the district. The, um, parent that was running the team just asked if, if I would consider lettering. And at first, it was like, well, we typically don't if it's not a high school thing, but what we found out, you know, no expense to the school, but they also had a criteria, what someone had to do in order to letter. This is probably the third time in my career, um, Equestrian has come and asked for their participants to letter. And it's the first time I've really seen that they have really gotten their stuff together and they're organized now. Many schools around the state, and now in our backyard, are lettering their students. All it costs is for me to give them a letter from the activities office. Um, it, they have their criteria in place. I printed it off, if you'd like to see it, but it's, it's a big document. But the kids have so many hours, there's so many things that they have to do. And I had two impressive young gals come in and, uh, ask if I would please bring this to the school board, because they are so proud and they put in so much time with their horses. And I looked at the criteria and went, wow, you know, all I have to do is give them a letter. Um, Elk River Rogers, St. Michael, Zimmerman, uh, right in our backyard, just started in the last year or two, lettering. Um, so it's pretty simple. They do all the work, no cost to the school district. The girls have, you know, pretty, a lot of requirements that they have to meet before they can earn a letter. So I'm asking you to give me the green light that I can just letter them. My desk, all I'd have to do is order a few pins, and it would make, uh, make the day for a couple of our high school students.
May I ask how many students are involved?
Yeah, at our school, they said that there's several, but two approached me, and they said they think there's a couple more. So, you know, it might be three or four this year. I don't know how many total, but they go to shows, and they said it's very competitive, and there's lots of, um, riders there. And, uh, I'm not an expert by any means, they just spoke the other day. But, um, they also can earn college scholarships, so it's really important that they show that they are meeting the requirements, and then they can apply for some scholarships. So, I was hoping that we wouldn't be holding them back, that it's something that we could grant and, and, um, like I said, make their day.
Just a general question, when we have like in a question club, so is that something that they're setting up through you to be considered a club, or how, how is that being run?
That's, it's run through that organization, so they do everything. They just, the, there's a head person that sends me emails that will let me know when someone that attends Monticello High School has met their criteria to letter. Um, they've asked in the past, and they haven't had enough criteria, so we've turned them down in the past. Now they have the criteria, so whoever runs the club for Minnesota has put together an impressive packet, and now schools are granting that. So it's not anything that takes place at Monticello High School. They join this group, and they go off on their own with their horse, and, and then when they meet the requirements, they notify the school's activities director.
So do we have other clubs?
Uh, we have the bowling.
Yep.
But it comes down to, you know, when we have a team, and when the coach reaches out. They have it in the last couple of years. So I'm not sure with COVID, you know, if they've continued or not, but no one has reached out in the last couple of years.
I guess, I guess the point I'm getting to is that if we have these clubs, then maybe there's opportunities for other students to become involved. I mean, obviously, Questring is a club that's probably, you know, a little bit different than your bowling club, simply because of cost and other factors that are involved with having a horse and that sort of thing. But if, you know, if we do have these other clubs, and if, I don't know if they're promoter or not, but maybe it's an opportunity for somebody that doesn't even know we have a bowling club, and if we could, you know, maybe in the fall, when, when we do a main street or something like that, kids have an opportunity to say, "Hey, we have a bowling club, maybe it's someone I could sign up for." And maybe it's a kid that hasn't done anything before.
Yeah. We've got a, a, a document that shows all the activities that they can sign up for. So if you guys are, are good with this, and you approve this tonight, then I would add that for next year. And I already told the girls, if it's approved, I'd let them know, and they said they'd pass the word to the other students that participate. It's a very small group, but like I said, it means a lot to them, and they put a lot of time in. Um, some of our other clubs definitely letter. You know, if, if they ask and they have a criteria, we do it. You know, we've, um, lettered kids in our media club that help in the stadium with, um, our technology out there, scoreboard. We, um, yearbook, the students that are in yearbook can earn a letter. So, lot, lots of them do when the advisor, um, puts together the criteria, then we will give them a letter.
Is the fishing club?
Fishing club is through community, and I have not talked to anyone on that yet, but, you know, it, I certainly could. You know, but like, again, like I said, they, they'd have to come up with a criteria that, uh, I don't know, some of them would have to figure out maybe how many times they participate, what they do. If that's the case, then, you know, we certainly could look at something like that. I think the, the more we recognize kids nowadays, the better. And it, it goes a long way. It means a lot to them when, um, they get noticed.
I would have to agree, not to mention the fact that there are plenty of things going on, lots of work that they're already doing, to be recognized for the other things they're doing outside of school. It's, uh, just makes us more of a, I think, I am for it.
I also agree, and I think they gain valuable life skills in a program like that, so I'm excited to see how that club grows in the upcoming years, knowing that it's available.
I'm in agreement as well, especially if they have access to scholarships within their specialty area. Uh, that's, that's huge, I think, in recognition with those areas as well, so.
Yeah, I think I might know some of the girls in that club, so, yep.
Okay.
Then I'll make an official motion to grant the request to recognize the class to be a club for lettering.
Second.
Senator, who has made a motion to grant the Questring Club the right to letter with the criteria met, seconded by Melissa. Any more discuss? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Right. Thank you.
Uh, moving on to innovation leadership. We're excited to announce, uh, we have hired a new principal at Pinewood, Mr. Olson.
So, um, anytime you get to, um, introduce a new hire, you also want to make sure that, uh, you recognize, uh, amazing years of service that Linda Borgertin has put in to both our district office and to Pinewood Elementary. So, we'll get, uh, Jeff will close with a little thing that we're gonna do with her later.
I'll just say it right now.
Okay, there you go.
We're just gonna give you a lot of love in June. Sorry, I messed up. We practiced this before, and I was supposed to say that before you said that, so. We haven't forgotten about you, we're gonna do it all, we're gonna do it well in June. So you can't take vacation in June.
We know that.
Yes.
I'll let my husband know we can't go to that.
Lots of time for that.
And I didn't want to step on my boss's toes, so I had to like, somehow see how I was gonna work that in there, but.
We're under the table.
Um, the hiring process, uh, this last month has been phenomenal. It was, uh, nerve-wracking. It was, uh, very competitive. It started with, um, almost 30 applicants, um, that came into our district for the principal position, and we put together six people to, uh, use a scoring rubric, uh, to bring forward, um, six candidates. Those six candidates, um, came forward on, um, the day before spring break. And one team, uh, at Pinewood, led by Clay Norman, our famous assistant principal. And, uh, then we had a, a district office, um, team, uh, put together by me. That included, uh, we had the parents, uh, we had two students, and we had, um, uh, admin and, and staff as well. So, a pretty extensive day to our interviews on that day, and we got it down to three candidates. And we brought those three candidates back, uh, for an interview with three members, HR and myself. And, uh, we, you know, it's still going, it was still going, and, and, and then you do your checks, and, um, started, uh, it, it started becoming so clear. Talent pool was so high. Um, Shelley Gilmore just continued to have people, uh, reach out to me, whether they were superintendents, whether they were admin at her current district, she's principal, um, in St. Francis. Um, but just, uh, just had so many pieces of the puzzle that just kept growing and growing for her. And we're excited to see, um, excited to have her introduce herself here now, and you don't wanna listen to me anymore. You, you wanna hear her talk, so I'll just say that she came through a wonderful process, and we're really proud of her, and we welcome her today.
I want to thank you all for this opportunity. I know that I have some big shoes to fill, and, um, I, it's an honor to be the next principal at Pinewood Elementary. I, um, just to give you a little of my background, I was a teacher and a coach for 17 years. I worked in curriculum for three years. I, um, was an assistant principal intern, all of those were over in, um, St. Cloud. I was an assistant principal at the middle school in St. Francis area schools, and then for the last four years, I was, um, the principal at Cedar Creek Elementary School. So, lots of great experiences, um, that I can bring here to Monticello, and I also know that I have a lot of things to learn about, um, this wonderful place. How difficult is it to go after two amazing students that were so articulate? And then to hear all about all the great activities and athletic accomplishments in the winter? This truly is an amazing place, and I'm happy to be here. I'm married to my husband, we will be married 25 years tomorrow, and, um, I, I have a daughter who's 18. I have a son who's 21. We live on a little hobby farm in rural Clear Lake, and, um, I've got a rescue dog from Korea and a bunch of chickens. So, um, in my spare time, I like to, um, I like to hike, I like to travel, I like to read, I like to kayak. Um, I like to keep pretty active, so, um, again, I want to thank you all for this amazing opportunity, and I'm gonna do my best to make you proud. best to make you proud. Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
You don't get to do it yet. You have to have a picture of Mr. Olson.
And there's a few people that want to bring up some gifts. Gary's been wrapping his present all.
Welcome to Monticello. If you need a different size, let me know, but.
Oh, Matt, welcome.
Thought we'd worn it up on a bus duty.
There you go.
And then we have a couple books from you, for you, you know, you said you like to read.
Yes, I do. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Here you go.
The board brought you flowers to welcome you. I don't know if you want to carry them in the picture.
Maybe I'll.
Yeah, it's under my hair.
Thank you.
We'll watch it. We'll keep it safe.
Thank you. Here we go.
Thank you.
Aren't you getting a picture with Jeff?
We already discussed that.
Put his best sweatshirt on.
My best sweatshirt.
Put your best sweatshirt on.
One of my best.
It's a quarter zip.
Oh, we're very excited to have you, Shelley, so welcome. Congratulations on 25 years. Tina, capital budget.
Good evening. After a while, you get used to presenting after students. Luckily, I haven't had to go after a therapy dog presentation. So you just never know what you're going to go after at a board meeting. But tonight, I have a asking for approval of our capital budget for the 22-23 school year. We have just under $1 million in capital funds that to go towards our capital projects. Our needs are very long and it was very hard to whittle it down to what we have listed in your packet for capital requests for next year. We do have some, you know, priorities that we would like to get to in some form or fashion, whether it's working with our custodians or internal crew to kind of help kind of make some steps towards what didn't get on the list. Or if there's things that come under budget, most definitely want to look at our list again as those needs come up. But for tonight, it's kind of what we have to move forward with next year's capital budget. And you never know with the legislation, we might get more allocated.
We kind of spent a lot of time on this with the budget. I request. Does anybody have any questions concerning capital budget? Okay, this is an action item.
I move to approve the capital budget. Seconded.
Motion made to approve the capital budget as presented by Tina, by Jennifer, seconded by Jamie. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those nay. Motion passes six-zero. Thanks, Tina.
Yeah, so we have both first reading and then we'll get to second reading in a bit. But the first reading of policies, the last two chunks that we brought to the policy that Candace, Jennifer, and Kathy have worked on, have been big chunks of a policy that had, we've been for a whole bunch that maybe just needed some minor tweaking because we know that it takes a lot to get through our policies and do them on a, the policies that they require. So the group that we're bringing forward here for first reading today is a group from MSBA that they say have just minor modifications. And the modifications were more for the sake of like clarity purposes. So we do not have, so policy 204, school board meeting minutes and just how basically the minor changes, how you publish those minutes, open and closed meetings. So like I said, just we have these, those two, which is that we went through at policy level. 208 is development and adoption implementation of policies. So just making sure that we have that type of policy. And that was also something that we had. And then we get 305, 422, which we did not have. So policy implementation, which is new policy, but it basically just describes policy and how you bring your hand forward each year. We have done by often by practice in my time here, but we're bringing the major back to that policy, we feel. And policies incorporated by reference, which just means that there are policies that you have for students and staff and it seems those ones that clarify policy. And then student disability, 521, discrimination, minor changes, obviously it's a very important policy to have. And then the last one, 561, policies incorporated by reference, which is a new policy. So these, like I said, these policies came in this group and have just minor changes if we have them, or we feel the clarifications in the new policies better equip our direction of our policy structure.
Well, former member, if you look at your policies, the changes have been made right in the actual documents. So if you have time to go through those and make sure, okay, and then superintendent also any change they agree or disagree with before the next reading, that would be great. Second reading of policies.
That brings us to second reading of policies. And today, we're bringing forth following policies for your second reading. They were brought forth at the last March meeting. The policies are public participation, so clearly defining the public participation at board meetings, criminal or civil action, policy 211, made reporting of child neglect, 414, 423, which is employee student actions, 519, interviews of students by outside agencies, and policy 532, use of peace officers. And as I noted last week, the policies came due to the Minnesota Legislature reorganizing the Meltreatment of Minors Act. And so it's from a criminal chapter to a public health chapter and just a reorganization of office at MSBA, felt it fit. It looks like it will fit nicely to our structure of policy.
Yeah. So everybody got a chance to look at these after they have been adjusted? Are there any questions or comments concerning these policies? Okay, so we need a motion to accept the second reading of the policies.
I move that we accept the second reading of policies 206, 211, 414, 423, 519, and 532.
Second.
So there's a motion made by Kathy to accept policies 206, 211, 414, 423, 519, 532 as presented and a seconded by Jennifer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Six-zero. We'll stay.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Made by Jennifer, seconded by Melissa to adjourn at 6:38. School board meeting, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
We can chase Gary, Mr. Revnik, and Mr. Colwell over to.